Do that. He was Jimmy, yeah. Has anyone signed on yet?
No.
Okay.
Miss Bertha's supposed to be calling in, I don't know.
It's Bertha. Give her one more minute. I was trying to give Miss Bertha another minute, but I guess we'll go ahead and get started if everyone's okay. Before I get started, I'd just like to extend my condolences to Mr. Trapp, his family. Like Ms. Trapp lost his mother, Ms. Johnson, I think she lost her mother-in-law, the Johnson family. And Mr. Chip Jackson, he was a county councilman in Richland County. So if we could just keep those families in prayer. Today's date is August 10th, 2020, time is 6:01 PM. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. First, I have the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Yeah.
It's been moved and properly seconded and in discussion. If no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Vice Chair Goins isn't online, if I'm not mistaken. She's trying to get along. Would anyone else like to step in and do an invocation for her?
Clarence.
Let us bow our head. Father God, we come before you in the precious name of the living son, Jesus Christ, giving you thanks and praises right now, Lord God. We ask that you give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of what you will have us do. We ask a special blessing upon the bereaved families this afternoon, Lord God. Just bless their hearts, Lord God, and give them peace. Lord, we just thank you for allowing us the opportunity to serve your county. And we just ask that, Lord God, that we just do what's right for the county. We pray this in your son, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Now down to approval of the regular meeting minutes dated July 27th of 2020. Do I have a motion?
Don't move, Ms. Chan.
Been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now down to our public presentations. We have two for tonight. We have one, Ms. Phyllis Watkins, for, I think it's actually 30-plus years, if I'm not mistaken, correct? So, yeah, almost 30, okay. Well, I'd like to say as chairman, thank you for your services. You definitely were a valuable asset. I remember when I first started with the Sheriff's Department years ago, and you were definitely adamant, and you set the tone for everyone, so thank you. Before I give it to any other council member, I'll go ahead and have Mr. Taylor say a few words.
Yes, I just want to say it's been a pleasure working with Ms. Watkins for the last only four years that I've had a chance to work with her, but it's been a pleasure. I want to thank her for her almost 30 years of service working for Fairfield County. In that 30 years, she's been a dedicated employee, and she's worked hard to keep the people of Fairfield County, our citizens, safe.
Okay.
Yeah, since you know what you're doing now, next 30 years will be a lot easier. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins, for your service.
Congratulations.
Ms. Bell.
Congratulations on your retirement. Again, as Mr. Robinson said, by being a sheriff deputy, been a volunteer fireman probably way over 30 years, and I've had the opportunity to work with you. And I tell you what, your professionalism and your expertise have been a great asset to the fire service. And again, thank you for your service.
Now, we do have a few tokens of love up here we'd like to come present to you, if you could, and get a few pictures taken, if that's okay. Try to read one of them to you. Come on back here, back here. The plaque reads, is an appreciation award presented to Phyllis Watkins in recognition of your exceptional leadership and devoted service as an emergency management director, 2020.
This clock says the same thing. For 30 years of service, this is so you'll never get how much time you got left.
My daughter made me wear the psychedelic mask tonight, so. Now down to item B, a proclamation recognizing August 15th through the 22nd of 2020 as South Carolina Aviation Week. We have Ms. Denise here available to give us a little insight on it.
Want to talk about it first?
Yes.
Aviation Week 2020 is August 15th through 22nd. And the theme of Aviation Week this year is helping helping aviation take off again in South Carolina. So this is off of a brochure that the South Carolina Aviation Association produced for Aviation Week this year. Keep aviation flying in South Carolina. Okay, so, South Carolina Aviation Week is an annual event held in conjunction with Overwright's birthday on August 19th, 1871. The week-long celebration promotes aviation through events that highlight airports' educational and economic impacts throughout the state. The purpose of Aviation Week is to educate the public and our government officials on the importance of aviation and the role it plays in our state's growing economy. Some of the difficulties that we had this year, when I volunteered to be the head person of the committee for Aviation Week this year in the state, I did not anticipate the problems that we would have. Some of the difficulties in 2020 with the growing number of cases of COVID-19 in South Carolina, the committee decided to try and promote events that did not include group gatherings. Flying healthcare workers was to be one of our main goals that we would like to have pursued. And when we produced our aviation magazine for this quarter, I was actually put on the front of the magazine with my daughter. My daughter's an RN, and we were going to fly medical personnel in the state. Although it came to the committee's attention that the Fly Healthcare Provider Initiative could possibly put healthcare workers and flight instructors at risk. With the goal of Aviation Week being to promote airports and South Carolina aviation, that risk could create a negative impact for flight schools, airports, the association, and the South Carolina Aeronautics. So the committee decided and discussed pivoting to a social media legislative campaign to demonstrate how aviation is helping South Carolina take off again. By identifying and interviewing companies that use South Carolina airports for transportation and supply chain, the Aviation Week Committee can highlight the impacts airports have on their communities across the state. Workforce development sources, the committee can show how aviation is poised to help South Carolina emerge from the current pandemic. So, one of the things we're going to do this year is we're producing a video that will have interviews from companies in the state of South Carolina and how they use aviation in the state. Some of the companies that we're interviewing are Med Center Air in Rock Hill, Senator International at Greenville-Spartanburg International, Medical Transport and Healthcare Systems in Spartanburg Downtown Memorial Airport, UPS at the Columbia Metropolitan Airport, FedEx at the Greenville-Spartanburg International Airport, Medical Transport at Sumter County Airport, Cargo Companies in Myrtle Beach International, the Workforce Development PIA, Workforce Development at Trident Technical College, and the Workforce Development Lockheed Martin. This video will be put on the South Carolina Aviation Association website. There are a few physical events that we are having in the state. On August 15th, downtown Spartanburg Downtown, they will have a Community Aviation Program, Capstone Program, at the airport. On August 15th, Beaufort County Airport will have an open house for their 75th anniversary. August 15th, Rock Hill York County Airport will have a Tour de York Aerial Parade. I'm not quite sure what's going to be involved in that, but somehow they're going to have airplanes flying and aerial photos being taken, or something like that. August 17th, our airport, Fairfield County, will fly our two senior discovery flights again this year that are donated by SNS Aviation. One senior student from Fairfield County High and one from Richard Wynn Academy. August 20th, we'll have a South Carolina, at the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission, the Aircraft Mechanic Technician of the Year presentation. And August 22nd, Greenville Downtown will have a FODWALK, where they go pick trash up on the runway. We have a few virtual events, and this was new for us, to try to figure out virtual events for airports. Georgetown County Airport is having an economic impact on Facebook presentation, so they're going to put something on Facebook. South Carolina Aeronautics Charts and Directory Photo Contest at the Aeronautics Commission. And Greenville Downtown Airport is also having an art contest. So Aviation Week for the state of South Carolina this year is going to look a lot different than it did last year. We were very successful last year with our events. And this year, unfortunately, we've had to change the type of events that we're having in the state. I think we did a pretty good job with it still. The video that we're going to produce with interviews from the South Carolina companies, I think is going to be very effective because we're trying to show how aviation economically in the state is still positive. And general aviation, which is what we are here in Fairfield County, is actually supporting commercial aviation, Columbia Metro and the commercial flights right now. The taxes from fuel sales in general aviation, which has actually picked up during COVID, is supporting aviation in the state of South Carolina, and I think that's something we can really be proud of. I mean, not that we really picked up on purpose, but because general aviation is an activity you can do by yourself or with a small group and wear masks while you're flying, general aviation has actually increased during this period, which nobody is talking about, by the way. I like this statement just about Aviation Week. It tells you how hard we still need to try to support aviation during COVID. Opportunity is missed by most people because it is dressed in overalls and looks like work. It's going to be a lot of work to get through this COVID-19. It was a lot of work to try to plan events still in Aviation Week, but I think we were very successful still. So, some of the, I think I missed a slide. Topics that I wanted to touch on for our airport, COVID-19 hasn't really affected our airport, per se. We haven't been closed, not one single day. Some passengers come in, transients come in with masks, some don't. It's one of those situations where they come in as a customer, and you can't really make them wear a mask in the building. But we do have sign-up sheets that they can do for contact tracing. If we find out that any of our flight instructors or anyone that we in the building tested positive or had symptoms of COVID, we can attempt with our camera system and our sign-up sheet for contact tracing to let people know that they may have been exposed. We have hand sanitizers and masks and those types of things at the airport. But the traffic, like I said, on general aviation has actually picked up, so we've been pretty busy at the airport. The pavement rejuvenation project that we have lined up for this year is the pre-construction meeting will be August 12th at 1:00 PM, so we're starting on that project. It shouldn't take more than a month to complete the rejuvenation, so we're on target for that project. We've been having the food drive out at the airport once a month in the last two months. It'll be this Thursday. And we had over 200 people serve the last food drive and did not have enough boxes, so I think we're getting more boxes this time. CARES Act. The airport actually received $30,000 in a CARES Act. That money is available currently right now. I think the intentions are to try to use that money to cover the CIP project that was approved. Is that still correct, I think?
Yes.
Our hangar maintenance store came in at $29,000 and some change. That was approved in the budget, but actually with the $30,000 CARES Act, I think we're going to be able to cover that. Hangars. We are in need of hangars. Every airport in the state of South Carolina has a waiting list for hangars. Our hangars are the only thing that we have that we get income from. And if we could build one more building with 10 units, and they're called nested T-hangers. We've run some numbers, if anybody has any questions about those numbers. Mr. Taylor asked me to bring those numbers with me.
I'd definitely like to ask. Just curious, I hate to cut you off, but what's the waiting list like?
Since I have been out at the airport for three years, I have not had one available hangar more than a day. Right now, I currently have a 27-person waiting list. Now, that can be a little deceiving because you have to have an airplane available to go into the hangar to get a hangar. That's one of the FAA regulations. But we're in desperate need of some hangars, and we could make more income.
As far as
They pay for themselves.
They will. I'll tell you the truth, it'll take about, between the building, the concrete, the electrical, and anything else to put the building up, I think it'll be around $400,000. And at the rate of our hangar rent right now, which we can raise a little, I think it'd take about 20 years to start making a profit. But they'd always be ours. They're very, very little to maintain, very little cost to support them.
Are we in line with the state as far as hangar fees?
We are.
About grants?
As far as hangars, they're kind of like the fuel farm was. Anything revenue generating, the FAA does not like to invest in. There could be some possibilities, we could get some grant money, but financially, the research that we've done shows that it would probably make more sense for us to invest in it. And then ultimately, we would start making the profit a lot quicker.
I think that'd probably be something we may need to look at as far as administration, to see exactly how much would it be to build a hangar? And it kind of seems like it's going to pay for itself anyway, so.
Yeah, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to show you the documents that I have for appraisals and quotes.
Majority of, how does it work with Fairfield County residents? Do they have priority, or is it just first come, first served?
First, let me tell you the thing I always tell people that want to get on the waiting list. There's a lot of airports that do not do waiting lists correctly. I, since the three years that I've been out there, I do it correctly. First come, first served, whoever has an aircraft when the hangar is available. We do not have any Fairfield County resident priority right now. We can dictate that if you'd like to. The only thing right now that can move you up on my waiting list is if you are a tie-down customer, if you have your aircraft tied down at the airport, that moves you to the top of the list.
Guess we could have Ms. Taylor take a look at it and see.
I mean, if you all, if council would like, we can put together a full proposal on what it would take to build the 10-unit hangar system that Ms. Bryan had talked about.
Obviously, obviously, it is a demand for it. Have you got a 27-person waiting list?
Yep, and I've had about probably 12 hangars come available in the last three years. I keep a list of, I've kept a list of every single one that I've ever given out since I've been here. And I have filled those empty hangars in the same day that they called me and told me they wanted to give their hangar up.
Well, something must be right. She's in the aviation magazine, so.
Good thing. Airport is a vital part of our economic development package and in selling the county also.
Definitely. I think M. Lilly flew in on it, used our airport a couple of times, so. Definitely would like to look at a package to see.
I would think the more airplanes we have out there, the gas we would sell, hopefully the more traffic we'd bring here to Fairfield County, so I think it could be
And the more traffic we have, the more federal funding and state funding we can receive also.
And we could put that in on the website also.
We can do that too, certainly.
Counselors, any? Ms. Denise?
We got.
Vice Chair Goins?
Hi, excuse me, go ahead. Go ahead and finish.
No, I was acknowledging you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Oh, all right. Good evening. Just when you were saying about the Fairfield County residents requesting hangars are first priority, are there enough requests that would be considered necessary to do something like that in Fairfield County? Do we have that kind of request?
I know she's talking
Can you turn it up a little bit, Chris? We're trying to turn your volume up a little bit, Ms. Goins.
Oh, oh, excuse me. Okay, I speak up a little bit. I was just thinking, not trying to change anything, but when you said that, I was just wondering if there are a lot of Fairfield County residents requesting hangars?
Are there a lot of?
Not usually. As far as I know, there's very few pilots that are in Fairfield County. But Mr. Taylor has informed me that he has been contacted by a pilot that is a Fairfield County resident that would like a hangar. As far as I know, that person is not on my waiting list. But it's definitely something that we can put as a requirement to move them to the top of the waiting list. The FAA doesn't dictate anything as far as restrictions on that type of preference.
Okay, now, my next question would be, if we did it in that manner, how would it affect the usage of the hangars? Would that restrict others that would be using it more, or whatever from that if we, you know, we did that? How would it affect the process that you have going? Would it make it better, or would it be a hindrance to it?
I don't think it would really matter because I don't think there's going to be very many pilots that are going to be living in Fairfield. But the more hangars that we have available that we could build, then the more we would have to offer them.
Okay.
I would add, I think it's a good argument to give people who live here a priority because they're taxpayers.
Absolutely.
They help support and fund this particular, this airport. So I would think it is a good argument to say they should move to the top of the list, along with people who have been customers for a long time.
I asked some of the other airports around locally if they have any preference for county residents on their hangar waiting list, and they said no. But that doesn't mean that they don't.
Okay.
Okay, okay. But if we have the ability to build more hangars, then by all means, we need to look into that.
Ms. Gilbert?
How many hangars did you say would be in this building?
There's 10 per unit, and that's if we do standard units. One of my suggestions for getting a quote is to add on one side of the hangar, if we can cut it down to four and do a larger hangar door entrance on one of the hangars, then we can get some larger aircraft in here. We can get a multi-engine or maybe even a jet. We'd have access to be able to get those in there. Some type of corporate hangar would be a great idea. But we have a location right now to build one hangar. We have a pad that's probably pretty much 95% prepared to put a hangar on right now, today. But if we could do a couple of other things with the planning for the airport, we would have plenty of room for a couple more, two or three more.
Are the planes as in the hangars?
Bring a jet in. I like that.
Yes, ma'am.
Are the planes as in the hangars used on a regular basis?
Yes, sir.
Because I wouldn't want nobody holding up a hangar that maybe flies once a year or once every two years and holding it up.
And that happens, and it could be happening at our airport, but I do my best to make sure that that's not happening.
These are longer-term leases also. We can't break a lease.
Yeah, you can't break a lease.
Correct. We have one, two, and three-year leases. They have the option to do whichever they like. They get no financial break from doing a two- or three-year lease. But some of them, they know that if they lock us in to three-year lease, we can't change the hangar rent. And they know that that's a possibility, especially with all the improvements that we're doing to our airport. Everybody, I think, sees it coming a little bit. So they're signing three-year leases to lock us in.
Well, my thing would be, you know, you lock us in for three years, but you use it two times in three years, and we keeping other people from using the hangar? Maybe not renewing the lease after three years?
I can make sure that their airplane is being used. The regulation with FAA is the airplane has to be, something has to be done with the airplane once every six months. And I try to monitor that, even ones that really are not flying, as long as they go in and put air in their tire. That's really all we can do, as long as they have a lease. And really, there has to be a good reason why we don't renew their lease, if they want to renew the lease. I think there's a couple of legal things in there that Tommy could probably talk about. But we're doing as much as possible to make sure our hangars are being used for what they're supposed to be used for. Because the FAA requires us to do that.
Having airplanes is just like having a motorhome. You're going to use it every now and then. You don't use it every week.
Thank you. Any further from council?
Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations again.
Yes.
I am so sorry, yeah. We do have this proclamation, so.
This proclamation is brief synopsis. Basically, it states Aviation Week is an annual event held in conjunction with Overwright's birthday on August 19th, 1871. It consists of a week-long celebration promoting aviation through events that highlight the educational and economic impact of airports throughout the state.
All right, now down to item 6A. We have, for public hearings, we have an application, an expenditure for the 2020 JAG Justice Assistance Grant Funds. This public hearing for Fairfield County will provide Justice Assistance Grant Funds. At this public hearing, Fairfield County will provide information concerning the proposed use of the funds in an identified program purpose area. We'll go ahead and open this public hearing up at six twenty nine. Ms. Davis, has anyone publicly signed to speak?
No one requested to speak.
Okay, we'll go ahead and i- instead of waiting, I know we're going to have to vote on it later, instead of waiting, just go and have the sheriff make a few comments if he wishes.
Grants for uh, ten thousand fifteen dollars. Um, one thing we wanted to purchase with the grant is a speed trailer. Be able to use it all over the county, Ridgeway, Greenbrier, um, Lake Watery, different places across the county. Something I've been wanting for years. Uh, now we have the opportunity to get it. Uh, it comes with a solar panel. Um, and also a, a data um, box where to keep the data. So we'll know um, how much traffic and how many people are speeding in that area. It'll keep all that for us. Other thing we're looking at is two body cameras. On that grant.
Sheriff, I, I've been out along for some while. You mean the speed trailers, you mean the box says forty five, what have you? Okay, I got you.
It'll have the speed limit sign on it, and then up above it'll have the radar.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And it'll, it'll check your speed and, and uh, and give it to you. Other thing we wanted to purchase was two body cameras. Uh, they're fourteen hundred thirty eight dollars. First off, let me tell you how much the speed trailer is. This um, it comes out to be ten thousand four hundred forty two dollars. And then um, and then the two body cameras, they come out to be fourteen hundred thirty eight dollars. And anything over that grant price of ten thousand fifteen dollars, um, it'll come out of our budget. Cover the rest of it.
All right, does council wish to discuss now? You want to wait till we get ready to vote on it? Guess we can wait then. All right. Thanks, Sheriff. No one else signed to speak? We'll go ahead and close this public hearing up at six thirty one. Now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. We have two for tonight. Item eight, third and final reading ordinance number seven five one, an ordinance approving the agreement to share costs and a first supplement thereto by and between Fairfield County, the sh, the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System and the Town of Winsboro and other matters related thereto. Do I have a motion? It's been moved improperly seconded. Any discussion from council? Or rather, a, a brief explanation of, of Mr. Morgan or, 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 or Mr. Taylor?
Well, either, the, the, the change is being prompted by the fact, again, that we're having to expend more money than we initially thought to work through the permitting process with the cog, and so that's what changes uh, or, or requires this change. Specific changes, uh, Mr. Morgan, do you want to go over those?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of council, I believe, um, Attorney C.D. Rhodes gave a very in-depth um, briefing about this at second reading at our last at our, the second he, reading at our last meeting. Again, these changes are basically to uh, allow for the, the sharing of the costs between the county and the Town of Winsboro as it relates to the joint water and sewer system. It provides for a graduated scale for, at the moment, more of the cost to be picked up by the county, but then that's just for the inner and the beginning period, once things settle down, and then this particular, uh, the joint water sewer system gets up to speed, gets up fully running, then it'll be an, uh, uh, allow for the sharing to be much more equitable at that point in time.
Thank you. Mr. Bill?
But it stills, um, the county's paying seventy five percent and the Town of Winsboro paying twenty five percent, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Any further questions from council? If no questions, uh, we'll take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Mr. Trapper joining us, thank you. That's five to two. Now down to item B, third and final reading ordinance number seven five two. To amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance number five nine nine to provide for the zoning reclassification from I one Industrial District to B two General Business District of six acres owned by Healthcare USA. Portion of tax map number one six four dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero zero two dash zero zero zero. That's a lot of zeros. Property, this property is located at State Highway two sixty nine in Winsboro, South Carolina. Do I have a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Uh, any further discussion from council? That's healthcare US company, not USA. Well, thank you, sir, for that clarification. Any from council? If no further discussion, we'll entertain a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Now down to item eight, board and commission minutes. Uh, each council member should have received it as information from the hospital board. No board and commission appointments, no old business. For new business, we have the uh, consideration of the approval of the application from the twenty twenty JAG grant funds. Um, Sheriff already explained what he was requesting, the money, uh, what the money would go toward. Do I have a motion?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Uh, any discussion from council? Sheriff, if you'd like to say anything else, or, okay?
I want to say something.
Mr. Bill?
Sheriff, I want to thank you for always looking for these type grants. This is a good deal. When you get that kind of money, and the only thing you're doing is putting a few, few dollars to it, so thank you for doing that.
Sheriff, the only question I have, and I think it's a great thing what you're doing. Once we monitor, like, a certain area and speeding, we have deputies that have, like, radars that can enforce speeding in the area.
Yes, sir. The vehicle that we got from Ridgeway, um, already equipped with two radars in it. But we'll have that vehicle available, and we have another one also, this uh, radar, and we have two deputies with radar certified.
How much, how much are radars usually, you know?
They can run up to five, six thousand dollars, depending on what you get. You get a cheap one for a thousand dollars, and like I said, they run up to five, six thousand dollars.
All right, um, if no further discussion, entertain a vote. All those in favor of uh, twenty twenty JAG grant funds signify by saying aye. Sound like there's no opposed. Eyes have it. Down to our county administrator's report, uh, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, want to give you all a brief update on COVID, and then I will turn it over to Ms. Maria Callaway, who is with Providence Health, their market chief nursing officer, if I can get that right. Uh, and she will give you a much more detailed um, uh, um, update on COVID, and where, where we as a county stand and the state stand, I think, as a, as a country stands. Um, but as far as the state, right now, I think the state has a hundred and, one hundred thousand four hundred and thirty one um, confirmed cases. We have in Fairfield County five hundred and seventy three uh, confirmed cases with six new cases, uh, as of today. Um, we are currently promoting and encouraging testing. We had a, uh, testing at McCrory Liston today uh, on the eighteenth at Fairfield Memorial from nine to two. We will have another free testing, COVID testing. And then on the twenty fifth, from eight to twelve, at Fairfield Medical Associates, they will be doing free testing. So encourage everybody. If you're symptomatic, please go get tested, uh, and follow through with quarantining, uh, should you be tested positive. Uh, Ms. Maria Callaway, I will turn it over to you, and you can give a much more in-depth um, update on COVID.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
One, one of the things, um, I guess about a couple of weeks ago, you know, we talked about, um, and Mr. Gilbert brought it up, talked about trying to get some like the five to eight time period. Um, is, were we able to do any of that?
I do know that we were working uh, with Cooperative Health to, to look at doing that. I don't know, Ms. Johnson was heading that up. I will have to get you some more information on that when I can.
We, we glad to get the test, and whenever we get it, okay?
Right, right.
Please know that. I'm just talking about that.
But the more convenient, the more likely people are to access it, of course, without question.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman, uh, council members, and uh, Taylor, thank you for inviting me today. And I have to keep my mask because I spend fifteen to twenty hours with just COVID patients every other day. Uh, so I'm in danger to all of you. So I will, I want to make sure, although I'm totally asymptomatic and I feel great uh, because I take care of these patients at close proximity and for long terms, I want to make sure that uh, I will keep my mouth, my mask and sorry, if, please always ask me a question if you don't, you can't understand what I'm saying, because I have a mask and a great accent. So, thank you very much. I wanted to, to start this discussion today to let you know a little bit about, a little bit of history, because COVID has taken us through a pathway in which we think we've never been before. And um, when I was getting ready for tonight, I wanna, I, I was thinking, oh my God, either I am very old, but I have actually uh, been around all these um, pandemics and epidemics that we had had since nineteen eighty. Uh, so in nineteen eighty, we had the AIDS epidemic, um, and as you know, that was uh, from the Republic of Congo. That was the first uh, uh, patient that we know that uh, we had, that had AIDS. And we determined uh, through that process, were, how the disease uh, was contacted, how we care for those patients. And we knew then that we had had some serious problems, not only in the States, but throughout the, uh, through the world. In the spring of two thousand and nine, I was also a nurse then. Uh, we had H one and one, and I was with the United States Army. And I can tell you that that was a terrible pandemic, um, and that was originated from the United States, and that went through the world. So, you know, once again, we did all, all the things that we're doing right now, I think that maybe wasn't as, uh, as contagious as COVID. But definitely a, a great impact. Um, Zika virus, um, maybe not so much in the Carolinas, but definitely in Florida, uh, back in twenty sixteen from Brazil. And of course, the Ebola virus from twenty fourteen to twenty sixteen. So, in December twenty nineteen, most of us already had heard in healthcare of what we call coronavirus twenty nineteen or COVID nineteen. Uh, we had heard, all hospitals in all the states have what we call infection preventionist. And those nurses with the um, team that deals with epidemiology and from D HAC, started, I started to get information about this COVID nineteen. At the same time, we were getting ready for a high flu process. So we already had increased in Providence our, of supply of PPE about ten percent. Cause we thought that we were going to get a higher um, um, flu vaccine process. When we heard in twenty nineteen uh, about COVID, we, we felt that it was really good process to increase our PPE again. So we increased our, uh, protected uh, protective gear to another fifteen percent, to twenty five percent. So back, uh, that was first part of Jan, January. So when all this started, we were very prepared with PPE, uh, because we had already taken a lot of steps to do this process. And we do this every year. We do this every year because we look at everywhere around the world through the who about what's going on in the world and how that's going to affect Americans. So we do a good job on that. So, let me tell you what we know right now about COVID, and this is very fresh, so I want to share these things with you. We know the um, was first discovered in Wuhan, China in twenty nineteen, late eight, twenty nineteen. But what we know now about the spread is something that is very important. COVID nineteen is a droplet, what we call a droplet type of virus. So, when we talk, when we scream, when we yell, when we sing, we uh, always uh, expect to rate droplets. When we cough, when we sneeze. So, what we didn't know about COVID nineteen is that these droplets stay in the air. The smaller the droplet, the longer it stays in the air, up to three hours. That was something that we did not, um, we didn't know of COVID nineteen. And if you ask most healthcare providers and healthcare workers, can tell you that has humbled us. Because we learn about this disease daily. Uh, so, up to thirteen feet, you can also expect to raise those droplets. So, what do we do in the hospital setting? So in the hospital setting, we have um, a lot of humidifiers with hydrogen peroxide that we put in the rooms to make sure that between patients, we get those uh, droplets out in, on a hydrogen peroxide environment to kill them from the environment. So to, we get those filters with, with these big machines that sucks the uh, droplets from the air. So we do that, and uh, we have a terminal process that lasts about one hour. Between patients in our emergency room, between patients in our CT, these patients in our MRI. Because these patients need care, just like every other patient. So the same processes that we have for imaging uh, that we have for surgery, we have to have a specific process that we follow to make sure that we care for these patients. And then we also care for others and staff safely. Uh, so we have those processes already started in, in our organizations. The other new thing that we know about uh, COVID, and uh, I think I talked to the, the commissioners earlier, is about the cytokines is a storm. What is that? But this is every immune system, when we get sick, we have uh, white blood cells and other cells that fighting infection. What we know from COVID, which we have seen in other diseases, but not as, as, as uh, impacting as we see in COVID, is that the immune system becomes uh, irate. And it starts acting in a way that hurts uh, the host, uh, but not the virus. Uh, so the virus is still very strong, but the host is start uh, being hurt by its own immune system. So a couple of things that we have um, seen, that the virus attacks blood vessels. How it attacks the blood vessels is still a mystery. We are getting more knowledge through autopsy. Uh, we're getting more knowledge through um, studies from um, China, Spain, uh, France, and the European Union, uh, that shows us, in our own studies here in the States that shows us that it, it has a great effect in the blood vessels. What we also know is that when you look at COVID and you look at the type of patients that attacks, uh, we've seen the um, patients with persistent conditions and cardiovascular disease have a ten point five percent death rate. Patients with diabetes, seven point three percent death rate. Chronic respiratory diseases, six point three percent. Hypertension, six point zero. Cancer, five point six, and others with no pre-existing conditions, one percent or zero point nine percent. So, one doctor um, said it very clearly, it seems that the risk factor seems to be vascular, uh, which is diabetes, obesity, age, and hypertension. We also um, thought at one point that um, that part of the blood vessels uh, affect, affected the brain. And that was the reason why we lose taste and we lose um, smell. But that's no longer what we think. Uh, it doesn't affect the nerve, it doesn't affect the central nervous system, it just affects the vessels that supports those nerves in the central nerve, nerve, nervous system. So that's what we believe that uh, taste and smell are affected. We um, are taking care of many of this county patients in our hospital. It is devastating not to have families to visit these patients. It's devastating to us to see how detrimental it is for, for all um, patients and families, especially those ones that are affected by our counties, like Richland and Fairfield. And um, we, I have taken care of some patients from this county, and these families are I give them, uh, they are amazing, because they are able to handle not seeing their family members. Getting sometimes little to non-information from us, because at times, we don't have um, details to give them. Uh, and sometimes, what we have to tell them is not something that they want to hear. I tell you that we um, are doing much better than we did when we started this in March. In March, we had, everybody was put, placed on a ventilator. Uh, and we learned the hard way, like people from New York and other, the other states, that that was not the right way to treat these patients. Uh, we do take, place them uh, on CPAT uh, machines and doing other high infusion of oxygen, uh, and we do that much better. We also have Rendezvous Bear uh, uh, that we are using, and we have a great allocation from the state of South Carolina that has supported their hospitals very well. Uh, we also uh, are using uh, steroids, um, and that seems to be effective. We also are using steroids, and that seems to be effective. We, early on, like many of the hospitals in the United States, started our convalescent plasma process, so we have been using that successfully. So we have some great success stories from patients that you may think that, you know, will never make it, but they, they are successfully discharged. We are concerned about the children, you know, for, because they, they experience, some of the children experience that, that storm with their immune system, so we are learning more about it. And what I can tell you is, we, every day we learn more, and every day our providers, and that means, you know, physicians and nurses are really taking care of these patients, and we're getting educated as new, new procedures and process come to the light.
Has this virus mutated?
We don't know that yet. You know, we, we truly do not know. So, but we, we're studying, and we're going to see what happens now in September, you know, with more children going back to school. What I can tell you is that still nursing homes patients are so vulnerable. One of the processes that we started at Providence, and actually, we are working in conjunction with Prisma Health, is that we started what is called a swim bed process. And swim beds are usually not urban city hospital process, but we know that many patients after surgery or after COVID are not able to go back to the nursing homes. Families of patients that are positive, or patients that are not positive, feel that if a nursing home is closed, they will not be able to place their home, the loved one in, in a nursing home. So through COVID-19 process, we started a waiver, I started an application in April 27, 2020, and we started our first evaluation of swim bed patients actually last week. So we will be able to keep patients to get a skilled care up to 20 days in our facility.
Okay. So any council member has any questions?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Calloway? Ms. Bell?
You, you mentioned about smell and taste, that's not one of them, but I'm hearing on the news that they're almost getting away from the temperature checks, so is that the case?
We're still taking temperatures, because the immune system is still will make people be febrile, so we are not, we are not, we are not going to stop doing that. So no.
Okay, and please go back over, if you don't mind, the percent of the, when you was going, when you was talking about the percent of the disease.
Sure, sure. My pleasure, yeah.
Because I don't know whether I heard that clear or not.
Okay, great. Cardiovascular disease, 10.5 death rate, 10.5%.
Okay.
Diabetes, 7.3%. Chronic respiratory disease, 6.3%. Hypertension, 6.0%. Cancer, 5.6%. And no pre-existing conditions, 0.9%.
When you talk about the cancer piece, is that the cancer survival, or is that the person with cancer at the time?
I'm sorry.
Okay, when you list the percentage for cancer.
Right.
Okay, is that the, the one who has survived cancer?
No, these are the death rate.
Have cancer at the time?
They, they had cancer and COVID, death rate.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ms. Calloway, I thank you, and I'm sure the rest of the council and staff thanks you as well. You know, when we first met with you that time, I think I was scared to even talk to anyone last time we spoke, you know, because it was so much unknown about this virus at the time. So I think you've enlightened a lot of us, and I'm glad you was able to come and give us your, your feedback on it, so.
But what I can tell you is, in terms of healthcare personnel in our organization, and I can tell you just in our organization, Providence, because we are so well-prepared for these patients, you hardly, you hardly see not even 3% of, even less percentage of people that will get exposed and then have COVID. Most of our healthcare exposure is community, husband, wife, you know, all the members of the family. Thus far in the United States, we only have no over, over 600 healthcare personnel that has died out of, from COVID. But you also need to be aware that not every state, only South Carolina is a great state that are assessing how many COVID healthcare personnel is contracted and die of COVID. But most healthcare workers are pretty well-versed and had to protect themselves.
I was amazed that when you was explaining how the, the, your body crystallizes, or?
Your, your body, it is amazing what God, you know, God gave us such a beautiful body. You know, we're blessed to, to have God.
Yes.
But the immune system become, every immune system, all of us, it's like DNA. We have different immune systems. Well, you know, some of us, some of us are different. And the reason I told you a little bit of the story about all these diseases is because I've been through all those diseases, and I'm still here. So, so I, I'm glad that I have a great immune system, but I think the key is that not every immune system works the same.
Yeah.
And when we see, we see this cytokinesis process, and what we're seeing is patients losing their limbs, like arms, legs, fingers through that process, and that's very unusual. It happens, and it happened with all the diseases, but this disease tends to make the immune system add in a irrational way. And, and the problem is, it doesn't kill the, the virus, it just kills the host.
The host. So it's technically, it's not compatible to H1N1 or Ebola?
No, 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 I mean, you know, the, the, it's so contagious. That is the, that is the caveat of this disease, that we really did not know how contagious it was. So, so that is the difference. Now, droplets are droplets, you know, so the cold, all of those are droplets, and they're contagious. This disease is a little bit different, and we, I promise you, we'll learn more. Today, we had a meeting with our Life Point Hospital, and one of, we're going to have one of the physicians from Vanderbilt, Vanderbilt University in Tennessee is one of those universities that is working on the vaccine. So we're going to have more information, and I will bring you, I will send you some slides for you to present, and I will bring you some information on the vaccine. So we need to be positive, because that's something that will be coming down the pipe, and we will, we will have more information, we will, I will give you the pros, and I will give you the cons, because, you know, it's always good to be well-informed.
That's true. Does council members have any questions?
Yes, Vice Chair.
Vice Chair Goines?
Yes. Hello, Ms. Calloway, I just, I just can't, I thank God so very much for all of those that he's placed, and given the knowledge, the wisdom, and the technology to use at a time such as this, and I cannot express my appreciation enough. My family and I are going through a situation now with my sister, and it is very devastating, and I can say to anyone, and I would like to say to all people, please use all the precautions that they're telling you, the mask, everything possible, because it is a very difficult situation when your family member gets to that point of not recovering. But I want to thank you for all that you're doing, and as I hear you say, the years and all, the word says there's nothing new under the sun, and you have been truly blessed to experience that word. And I just want to thank you for the presentation. Everything was so clear and so good, and I hope that people will take it to heart. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mr. Bell?
I also want to thank you for your presentation. Really good information, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else from council or staff?
Thank you, Ms. Calloway, for keeping us well informed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Greatly appreciated.
Definitely.
I just have one last item. We're continuing with the food distributions. We will have five new food distributions at five separate locations on Thursday, August 13th, starting at 5:00 PM. They will be at McCrory Liston, the McCrory Liston School, the Fairfield County Airport, Fairfield Middle School, Giger Elementary, and Mitford Fire Station. Again, that's Thursday, August 13th, we'll be distributing food, starting at 5:00. And encourage people to come out.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Now down to, there is no clerk, the council's report, now down to county council time. Would any council member like to be recognized?
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Vice Chair Goines.
Okay, I would like first thank Corvus Healthcare for doing the COVID-19 testing at McCrory Liston School of Technology today. Was not able to get up there to see what the response was, but I will check back with them, but I just wanted to definitely say thank you, and to Mr. Laura Johnson for setting all of that in place, as well as our food share, boxes for the community. There's really been a, a task, but she was able to do it with all the help of the others, and I just want to thank God for that. So many people have responded to that and said how much they appreciate it and how much it was needed. So I just want to thank you and everybody else that had a part in that. I also would like to say, and I know that I've noticed in all that we are going through with the protesting and everything, we're not hearing what we need to hear, and nobody is, it seems like people are silent on it. But when I was listening to Ms. Calloway, and she was saying about the term of years that she's gone through things, this is not new, and it's not protesting, it's not about injustice, it's not about race, it's not about politics, it's about rebellion against God and His Word, and those that are Sunday School teachers and pastors and preachers know well that this is what's going on. There's no way you can seek injustice, rioting, and causing people harm, and destruction of property, and then you say you're looking for injustice. As well as I saw the article where they're doing the plays for monuments, all those things are part of history. And if we would do well, at one point, I saw on TV where the president held up the Bible. The former vice president said that if he had read it, he could have learned something. If we all read it, and believe it, and obey it, we can all learn something, and what's going on now would not be happening. So I want to encourage the young people, I want to encourage the older people in this county, or whomever hear my voice, don't go along with the agitators and those that are just deliberately using this as an excuse to do harm. I want to also say, I understand about police shootings and, and all of that, but it's not every police officer, and I want to commend them for what they have to go through, because I'm well aware of that. Want to bring it, that incident, for some reason, it stays with my mind, and in October, the young man is going to do a memorial to his daughter, where the mother of a black woman was killed by a black man, and a black child was killed by a black man. The remains were put in a bag, dumped into a dumpster, and no, she could not breathe, thrown into a landfill. But who went into the landfill to bring out the remains? The police. Who goes into communities when seniors are being beaten, and when they're being attacked, and when black women are being abused? The police. Who goes out when children are being abducted, and when they are being sold, and when they are being used, and forced on drugs, and into prostitution? The law enforcement, they're the ones. And Mr., and Mr. Chair, and you, and Mr. Paul, and can attest to all of this. The things that you see, the things that you go through, the people out there in the street that's rioting and doing all, they have not a clue until something happens to them or their family. So I want to say to this county, the people in this county, that are believers, that are Christians, go back to what God says to, and if we don't, there's no repentance, there's no humility in prayer. Second Chronicles 7:14 says, "There will be no forgiveness, and this man will not be healed." Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Goines. Any other council member like to be recognized? If not, if you just permit me a few minutes, I just want to reiterate a couple things. One, again, offer my condolences to the Trapp family and Johnson family. Also, second thing, just received a message, WellVest is going to be a partner and agency with WIWA, and they're going to be offering prescription medication for the uninsured. So I'll probably forward this on to Ms. Patty, and go, and so she can send it out to all council members, so, so that'll be able to help with prescription medication. Third thing is, I took, I took a ride within the rural areas, and just took a ride over the county Saturday. I like to ride and think, that's my best place to think, and I couldn't help but notice, but we still got a long ways to go with blight, abandoned houses. We've got a lot of work, we got a lot of work to do, and I took that in consideration and wanted to get with Mr., Ms. Taylor Administrator, to try to figure out how can we partner with some people? And I'm curious, how can we, we work something in conjunction with Fairfield Forward or another CDC, maybe doing match funds? We put up 500, CDC puts up five, to, to try to bring everything, beautification projects? I know we definitely, we have a lot of things we could possibly assist in. Maybe you can kind of help me with that?
Can I say something, Mr. Chair? Because what you just said is very powerful. It really is, and, and there's, there's so much stuff that's going on in our communities. We got to find a way to try to help and alleviate some of this stuff, because we can. We, I believe we got the right, I'm sorry, I believe we got the resources and everything to go ahead and try to do something. If you can't do but a little bit at a time, you, you know, how someone eat an elephant? One bite at a time. And we ought to be thinking about that, and I think what you just said is very powerful.
I, I do think we could structure, we could come up with something to present to council. It may be that we do need to partner and work with some of the existing groups, especially with, with housing, since we don't have a housing authority here, it may be good to bring someone in to work with. And there's, you know, with the Zion Hill Project, that's a wonderful project, but again, working with the grant, and I'm thankful they provided the grant, it's a relatively slow, cumbersome process. So if we could come up with something where we could fund, set aside some money, and have it more run in-house, so it could be quicker, more flexible, and maybe could achieve more targeted goals, like what you're talking about, as opposed to, again, very happy with, with the CDVG grant, and we will continue to pursue those, but again.
That's a long process.
That's a very long, it's a two-year process typically to get something done. So we, let us put together something that we can bring back, and even possibly reach out to some partners. There's, there's groups out there, whether it's Habitat for Humanity.
Yeah.
With Housing, or Saukahatchee, which is doing a lot of work on roofs and things like that. But if we could set aside some funds, whether we use it as just direct assistance to some of the programs, we could work with possibly, as you mentioned, I think with Fairfield Forward.
Yeah.
Which is a separate CDC that we work with regularly, we could fund them directly, or we could come up with some, some matching funds to even encourage leveraging other funds to come into the county.
Without a doubt, it'd have to be a partnership somewhere, because we, we can't do it ourselves, we're gonna, we're gonna need help, we're gonna need help, so.
Yes. And not only that, Mr. Chair, we need help from the community to be active in doing this. Poverty owners have to get involved and be active in wanting to clean up their property, and just so much filthy stuff around people, houses, they need to get involved. If we have to do through that, grant some kind of help incentive to help get stuff moved off, painted up, or whatever, do community, in-community help, where neighbors begin to help clean up other properties and houses or whatever. But this is something that is so important for this county to grow and to be progressive, because these are the things, just like you wrote, I listened, you said you rode through the county. Other people ride through the county when they're considering coming here to live, to do business, or to bring a business, they ride through, and we don't even know it. And these are the things that they see and look at, and that's not what they're looking for. So it is, it is very good, a very good idea, yes, and whatever I can do to help, please let me know.
Thank you, Vice Chair Goines. Does council have anything else? If, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move, Ms. Chair.
Been moved and properly set. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you all.